Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and children. Good evening. I want to inform you that we're reconvening the meeting of the board in closed section. And we'll go into flag allegiance in closed section. And here are board members. Start this place. Thank you very much. Pledge allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask my board members to adopt the agenda. Phil Mill, Dr. Barnes, and Mr. Kim, second class. Any discussion on that? Say none? All those in favor? Five. Five, five zero. So accepted. The next item would be action taken in closed session. And the action that was taken in closed session... Action on, I mean, there was no action taken on the expulsion case. And because we're formulating a plan, which is requested, we're going to be following that procedure with a plan. And then number two. We, as a board, decided five to zero. That the board would... In closed session, we discussed the items and also the information provided by personnel. And we came down to dismiss Mr. Munoz. Mr. Pedro Munoz, for the record. And Mr. Munoz has been dismissed from his position as custodian. That was a five to zero decision. Now we're going into public hearing. I may. I do want to invite, of course, comment and invite information by the public at the same time, but not get too long a state kind of dialogue in there. But at the same time, thank you for being here. Muchas gracias por estar aquí estudiando y también participando. And your participation as well as your involvement is very needed, as always. Thank you. We're going to public hearing. Article 10. Teacher evaluation. And it's a side letter coming through to us. Personnel, want to make some comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just that we had agreement with S E T C and the district that we would negotiate the evaluation article after we concluded our other negotiations. We did this as a side letter because both parties want to see how it works for the next two years.
Thank you very much. And do I ever have public comment? Not here? Not right now? Closed, just for closed. We're closing. We're going to close the public hearing, or leave that. It is the public hearing. So the next thing is communication and present presentations. And these are acknowledgements, and also of employee organizations, superintendent, board members, and rely on previous questions.
Buenas tardes. Good evening, audience. At this time, an acknowledgement, my first acknowledgement is going to be to our personnel in our district. Last month, October 17th, was our professional day. And we did have 340 certificated personnel participating in professional development in math and machine technology and others. All those sessions were directed to address for a better interpretation of common course. I think it was a tremendous success because over 80% of core personnel participated that day. So we're very pleased. At this time, I would like to invite, I think we're going to announce the Fiesta Familia. Please, you have the floor. Good evening, welcome. Bienvenidos.
Thank you very much. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Raya Delaena. I'm a committee member, the professional organizer for Fiesta Familia. Fiesta Familia is a committee of parents with children with special needs. And we have an annual event, which next year is going to be our 10th annual. And what we do is we hold a community event for Hispanic families with children with special needs. And it's done in workshops. The last eight years, we've been doing it at Alisal School District. And we've been fortunate enough this year to be doing it at the Sablevitz School District this year. So today, we are here with our president, Manol Maquilla, committee member Andres, and Señora Linda here to give the certificate of appreciation for the school district's participation. And for Mrs. Chaidas, we're also helping us organize. And all of you board members who help us continue this event and hopefully we continue to have this relationship for many years to come. So I'd like to present this, if I can go ahead and read this. This is from Fiesta Familia that I would like to recognize. Salinas City School Elementary School District for your generous help to our families. Your valuable contributions and dedication to our organization has made possible the expansion of our services to the families in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Can we take a picture? Is it okay? Okay, that's fine.
May I?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your
Fiesta Familia.
Thank you so much for all your help. For the principals as well at every school, for everybody that does, the teachers especially. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Let me get that photo.
For the parents as well, too. Monica's a very...
They only gave you three minutes.
Oh, okay, that's fine. We'll get on the side.
I've got two more minutes left.
Okay, almost there. All right, ready? Okay, two with that, and let me take one with ours. All right, ready? One, two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Fiesta Familia, the committee of wonder.
Gracias.
I wonder what's coming up next.
We have 150 parents. We have 65 children attend to them, to the Fiesta Familia.
I do want to note, this is a family that's engaged. This is a family that serves. And also a family group that invites the world to come to the Fiesta Familia.
And volunteers.
And volunteers. Looking for volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Acknowledgement. I would like to invite the vice school principal from Roswell School. I think we have some acknowledgement. This is a...
Hi, good evening. I hope you have a couple of acknowledgements. The first is a certificate of appreciation that is being given to the First Presbyterian Church. Here in Salinas, right on the street. They came in and made a significant difference in our school community, you know, the community within, by completely renovating our garden. They put a lot of work into it. It's beautiful. The kids love it. They noticed that it makes a difference. I see parents taking pictures with their children and just sitting out there while they're waiting for their parent-teacher conferences this week. Sitting there enjoying the relaxation. Teachers have been having lunch out there. And I don't know if they really, if press understands the impact that they made on kind of creating such a serene area in our school. And the students made a lot of, you know, thank you cards. Some of them we've already given. And I don't see Rita here. I know she had another commitment also tonight. So wanted to make sure that she was publicly acknowledged so that we can let them know that we are, we're very thankful for the work that they did. Okay, the other acknowledgements that we have are for certificate of reclassification for the students that have met our district's criteria for reclassification from limited English speakers to fluent English proficient. As we know, we're all learning different languages. Some of us continue to learn English even if it's our first language. And it's a huge task for students who are learning English as a second language. So we have a few students here that we'd like to recognize. Bautista Mendoza Martinez. And some of these students might be at sixth grade camp also because they went today. So Noemín Norias. Gabriel Solís Pozos. Most of them are sixth grade, yeah. Cassandra Rubio. And Orlando Velázquez. They are enjoying their experience at sixth grade camp this evening. Thank you, Bautista. Congratulations. Thank you.
I think we do have a other acknowledgement for Scola Sherwood. Correct? Mr. Principal.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Lusa, cabinet. We are also here to recognize students that have also met the criteria to be reclassified and are now to an English proficient student. So I will name their names. Muy buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por estar aquí, especialmente a nuestras familias. Vamos a estar nombrando a nuestros estudiantes con gran orgullo que han sido reclatificados aquí en el distrito de Salinas City. Por favor, pasen para enfrente, también con los padres que están aquí. El primer nombre. Ya sé que no veo a todos, pero vamos a nombrar Juan Bravo Pérez. Un aplauso. Alexis Calderón. Jorge Gutierrez Zaragoza. Jacqueline López García. Alexia Mariscan. Adrián Martínez Villarreal. Roy Nucci. Ricardo Ruiz. José Vázquez. Gael Rodríguez.
And thank you to our teachers that are here for the work they do and support our students. A lot of talent here. Okay, we're going to go to the next item. The next item is our employee organization. Do you have to present? Brief summary? Next, please. Comment? These are employee organizations. Look at her. Thank you very much.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Lusa. I'm here during the very busy time for teachers. We are working, well, most of us have finished report cards, but we're working on finishing up those report cards and also doing our parent-teacher conferences. I know that I was at my school cell five this afternoon with parent-teacher conferences, and there was others there, too. So these are long days for us. I wanted to present this teacher survey done by S E T C of teachers. We, back in August, I talked about the fact that teachers were not feeling prepared for the Common Core. And I know that I didn't, I didn't feel at the time that that was generally accepted by the board that that was what was going on. So we've done this survey. Our first question of teachers was how prepared do you feel to teach Common Core state standards? We had 33% feel, report that they felt not prepared. And 54% felt that they were only somewhat prepared, leaving 12% feeling, 11% feeling prepared, and only 1% feeling very prepared. So 87% of teachers do not feel prepared. And I think that's what I retorted in August. I understand, and I think what was brought up at the time is that the district has done quite a bit. I get that. But I'm telling you what teachers are feeling. That was my point back in August, and it is my point now. This is teachers' perception of what is actually going on. The second question was, do you feel the district supported you in implementing Common Core? 50% feel not supported. 46% feel somewhat supported. And only 4% feel supported. None felt very supported. So that's 96% feel only, feel not or somewhat supported. So these are, you know, like I said, this was a quick little survey. It was done, only the two questions, just to get, to gauge, you know, what was going on. And here we are in October, and teachers are still feeling quite overwhelmed by the whole process. We had a list of comments that we've given you. When asked if you prepared, or how prepared you feel to teach the Common Core standards, someone had answered they felt somewhat prepared. And that further, I feel we have not been given proper materials or time to plan and prepare. Another felt somewhat prepared and said, I feel I was ready to begin teaching the Common Core standards. However, we were not given materials to teach the standards. When asked, do you feel the district has supported you in implementing the Common Core standards? Someone answered with somewhat supported. I feel that we have been given training on how to create lesson units, such as flattening rally. However, we're lacking rich texts and materials to pull from. So I want you to know that what I said back in August was a true reflection of what teachers were feeling. And I told you back then that they were not feeling ready. They were not feeling confident and comfortable about the, these huge changes that are being made. And I think that's still, as this survey shows, holds true. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have C S E A on the floor. Okay, substitute teachers. Floor. Take down the two. Okay, let's go with the super tense sound. You need to know from inside of the... Board members? Can I share your...
Go ahead. Jeff, you want me to start?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I was not here last time. And when I was going through the minutes, I see that Sylvia Huerta was upset that my wife was going door to door collecting signatures for a recall. And that's not true. My wife has never gone door to door collecting signatures. And maybe some of you read the article in the newspaper that said I work for B B D, which I do not. I work for all students, all, all parents in our district. And anybody who wants to talk to me, I'm happy to talk to them about how to improve our district. And Dimitro Ferneda, in the minutes here, said he was saying that the district is divided, that he wants more programs for Hispanics. And I think all of our programs are for all of our students, not just for Hispanics. And I just wanted to make a comment on what happened last time. Hopefully, I won't be taken away again for a while. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, just a couple of things. First, I'd like to talk about Common Core. Carol, thank you for bringing that up because I've been tutoring and substituting all the districts. And everybody is having difficulty. I mean, it's a very, very hard transition. And that's no excuse, but I'm just saying that the math is unbelievable, what's happening, even if it did to junior high and other ones, well. So, I mean, all together, as a community, as a nation, we have, you know, this is a mandate. We all have to do it. And so we better figure out how to do it successfully and support each other. Also, I wanted to say, I visited several classrooms and saw the frantic testing that was going on. And I feel, I felt really badly to watch the teachers and see how hard they're looking on the testing. I think we need to reassess it, and we're going to discuss it today. I asked Mrs. Sanders to bring it up and explain the situation. How many, how many, how much of this is new testing, how much of it is old testing? I think we need to look at the number of problems. We need to look at the number of tests. And we need to look at the support that our district can give the teachers. So, you know, we have to hire some substitute teachers to come in during the time that your tests are due. And I think we can do that, and we need to expend the money. Because teachers shouldn't be taken away from teaching to be testing all of them, especially when they have...
Mr. Kim? No comment, Mr. Kim?
Yes, sir.
You can comment at this time?
Thank you. All I want to make is one comment. Thank you, everybody in this room, for working together. We may have different ideas and different ways of doing things, but we're doing one thing. Pulling children to the top. Helping them get there. Supporting parents, supporting the staff, supporting the community. And at the same time, being alert as much as possible when it comes to the safety of these children. And that's my generic presentation of what I've been up to. And I've been up to working with senior citizens. And again, most of us up here are senior citizens anyway. So we're going to be, you know, enjoying the future as well. So I want to thank you very much for being here, and also my board. Now, you're not mine, but, you know, we sit here to make decisions. We have our differences, we have our balances, unbalances. But at least we pull it together forward. Thank you. Thank you very much. In summary, it says we're trying our best with all we've got. And we're engaging a lot of people along the way with us so that we can all be successful together, not alone.
Next item would be previous concerns.
No replies to previous concern at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We're going to, at this next stage, visit individuals desiring to address the board. And again, I want to remind us, any person has the right to... From the audience, desiring to address the board on matters, not appearing on the agenda. Not appearing. In the past, some had slipped by and turned it into items that were on agenda. And I'm going to be closing it down if it's not on the agenda. I mean, if it is on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda. Thank you.
Buenas noches, miembros of the La Mesa Directiva. Mi nombre es Silvia Huerta. Sé sabré que seguido vengo a hablar aquí porque a mí me interesa a los estudiantes. Desde que yo llegué a este país, le interesó mucho los estudiantes para que los estudiantes salieran adelante.
Good evening, board members. I know I come up here pretty often because I'm interested in the students. And since I came to this country, I've been interested in with best of students.
Ahorita escuché mi nombre del miembro de la mesa. Sí, yo vine a hablar. Él no estaba, pero no hable mal de él porque no estaba presente. Ahorita sí puedo hablar mal porque él está y me puede contestar. Su esposa pagó, sacó muchas firmas donde viven ellos para sacar a la miembra de la mesa que tenemos aquí.
I heard my name from one of the board members. And yes, I did not speak badly of him last week. He was not here, but now he's here, so I can speak of him. And his wife collected lots of signatures to remove the previous representative that had...
Mire según ya reunieron las firmas, lo que necesitan. Pero todos no les importa la educación de los niños. Cuando la miembra ya va a cumplir en junio su periodo.
So supposedly the signatures have been collected, but in reality, not everybody has the students that have greater interest than the signatures were collected. And the member is about to...
En junio va a cumplir ya su periodo.
And in June, she would be completing her time period here.
Sabemos bien que es mucho dinero lo que se va a llevar. Si a ustedes no les importan los niños, a nosotros sí nos interesa los niños. Eso que están haciendo no es contra la miembra, es personal. Si son personales que lo saben a nosotros, los padres.
So what you're doing here is not in the best interest of the children. It's something personal, and if you have something personal, then you need to speak to us, the parents.
Vamos a pedir que pasen una ley que no hagan eso rico cuando les queda un mes, dos meses, porque es mucho dinero lo que se gasta. Y como no es de su bolsa, pues no les importa.
So there's a lot of money involved, and we want to have a law, something that states that prevents this recall that with a month or two left, there's so much money involved, and it's not out of your pocket.
Tenemos un problema muy duro en las escuelas. Un problema que no hay maestros ni lingües ni culturales. La persona que se dedica a emplear los maestros, ¿qué está haciendo cuando está ganando un sueldo muy alto y no está haciendo nada?
Gracias, señora. Ahorita vamos.
So we have a lot of teachers, but they're not bilingual or bi-cultural. So what is this person, whoever is in charge of employing teachers, what are they doing? They're getting paid a lot, and we're not getting a teacher.
No queremos maestros suplentes. Queremos maestros. No queremos maestros suplentes, queremos maestros regulares que estén en el salón. Gracias.
We don't, we don't want substitute teachers, we want regular teachers who are there permanently.
Thank you very much. Do we have other individuals with comments that are not on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Hello, my name is Oscar Ramos. I'm the SETC Vice President and it's a very difficult job, especially when everyone has their cell phone number and their email address. So, this is what I did last night. I was, I went back, listened to phone calls, voicemails, read some emails, and I, I looked at my notes from previous board meetings and I noticed that I had written down more than, more than once the following comment. "Our district is made up of 100% Hispanic-Latino students." Now, I would like to clarify for the record that according to the information posted on the California Department of Education website, this is absolutely not a true statement. We all know this already, but I felt I had to address this comment because it's been made more than once and it has been stated as a fact. As a matter of fact, a few teachers have approached me as the SETC Vice President to say that it bothers them that nobody from the district has stood up to make that correction. So, I'm saying this now, our student population is not and has never been made up of 100% Hispanic-Latinos. Now, I'm Mexican and I'm proud to be in a district where we have, and I always wanted to use this word, we have a cornucopia of races, ethnicities, and cultures. And I went to Cal and they do too. Let's embrace that diversity. And another comment I would like to address, and I must say that it's a very sensitive topic, is the belief that many teachers and parents don't support Dr. Luzo, our current superintendent, because they have been called racist and that that's their primary motivation for questioning every decision. Many teachers and some parents have found this accusation very insulting and upsetting. Again, as the SETC Vice President, I can show, this is not the case. I have found in talking and, you know, and I've always known, that there are Hispanic and American teachers and parents who support Dr. Luzo very much and are very passionate. And I have also found that there are Hispanic and American teachers and parents who don't support him. So, I guess what I'm saying is, race, ethnicity, and culture have nothing to do with our current situation. And if for some of you, it, it does, it is, then it shouldn't. What it should be about is leadership and what's right for our students, parents, teachers, and community. So, can we please, let's move away from the politics already and focus on what's truly important, educating our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree, you're right. Yes, sir. We have three minutes before we go into the next item.
My name is Sean Henry. I'm a parent that has children in Mission Park. I'm actually wearing what I wore when I first met Dr. Luzo over here above, in May. I had seen him again in different capacities. I have no opinion one way or the other because my representation in the school district starts with my teach, my kids' teachers, the conversations I have with them and the conversations I have with the site. And everything's very good. And I wore this shirt and hat because I had no idea what I was getting into when I was at my child's school at a ironically enough Ancestors' Day. We had diversity going on in the classroom and different groups. And Mrs. Ross, second grade class, a little shout out for her second grade teacher there. I volunteered at the time to time doing the athletic club. So, I happened not to be at work that day because I was taking the day to volunteer to do something in my kids' classroom. And so, that's when it first came, Dr. Dol, Dr. Luzo, and we found out that, you know, there were changes with our principals. And so, I was among several parents that just came over because we were shocked. And we had a discussion in there and, and really I understood the whole personnel matter thing and so I kind of understood, you know, the sidestepping, you know, not really getting information. I did remember a couple of things though, that really struck me, how many times it was said, "You just, you just need to trust, you need to trust." And, you know, as, as a parent, we really entrust our kids or to our school and our school district because education is our future. And you all make a lot of very important decisions up here. And in all the different presentations and discussions I have, I truly do value what you do. You know, you have a $65 million plus budget and a lot of, a lot of the future residing in the decisions that you make because it steers the district towards one direction or the other. So, some of the trust was broken immediately after when Dr. Luzo went and said different things, interesting enough, about our demographics of our school and how we do. And, you know, and it's been said in a lot of different meetings here. And a lot of times, I can be honest with you and say that, you know, coming up here to speak as a blond-haired, blue-eyed man in Salinas, I know I don't represent the majority of the students here. But when I speak, my, when I speak from the heart, I'm speaking for all the students here because every student in this community is our future, in Salinas. I love Salinas and they're our future. So, when we're talking about things like trust, in the last six months, coming to these board meetings and seeing how the teachers have, have said things like, "We don't have books." I just found that out when I was in here listening to the teachers. And there was literally an argument about, all the books have been out there. And it took a couple of weeks and it took the news coverage to come out to say, "Yeah, there's a problem with the process." So, trust is about transparency and we really need to get transparency in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other individuals with items not on the agenda? I don't see any. See one now? Yes. You have three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Wes White. Both of my daughters have been attending this school district for years. I'm a concerned parent and a substitute teacher for seven years. I'm currently a teacher in four school districts while being a preferred substitute in one of them. I've been doing my best to objectively and compassionately look at things from a perspective of both a teacher and a parent. As an active member of building a better board, which is a coalition of motivated parents, teachers, and community members, I provide what I can, when I can. The activists in this group collectively consist of what's in our hearts, which is to say that we are concerned for our children, their classmates, and their teachers and how they are being treated and represented within the school district. Integrity and the search for a positive resolution where our children are concerned is our primary focus. Positive role modeling for parents and teachers includes empathy, consideration, sharing, compassion, taking turns, objectivity, appropriate boundaries, following the rules, accepting consequences, forgiveness, and that in the end, other, other people's feelings matter more than winning or being right while still maintaining appropriate boundaries. As parents and teachers, we know what positive role modeling is for and we strive to do so for our children's sake as well as our own sanity because we want to build a more conscientious, positive, inclusive, and transparent society, which only paves the way for a gentler, kinder, and more compassionate and accountable global society in future generations. You know what? BBB is made up of parents and teachers. We have obligations to our families and now unfortunately to this recall effort. Not because we thought it'd be fun, but because we are compelled to stop the perpetual cycle of abuse of power by this majority board that continues to be inflicted on our children and their teachers through, through some very poor management decisions and resulting, through some very poor management decisions, private intimidation and resulting public silence when confronted. We have an obligation to stand up for it and protect a little guy. The deception and bullying made from the top down within this school district needs to be continually, needs to continually be exposed and extinguished through transparency and empathy. In general, this majority school, school district board, staff, and friends need to meet its teachers and parents more than halfway if our district's students and their teachers are to create a positive learning environment that gets us well out of the number two worst educationally ranked city in the nation. Your current status quo system of how you've been doing things obviously has not been beneficial for my children, most of their classmates, or their teachers. It's also very hurtful and mean spirited. Stop your bullying and selfish behaviors when it comes to your interactions with teachers and parents on the whole. Be the positive role models you expect from your students and teachers.
Thank you very much. We have one more speaker. And they're not going to cut it loose. Let me cut it short to get the meeting, get the meeting to finish. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mrs. Olivas. I'm a mother of two, of two students at Mission Park, a second and a third grader. I'm a former Ellisville High School teacher and I had nearly 12 years of high school teaching experience before I decided to be a stay-at-home mom with my two young children. I'm here with a desire to be heard by everybody on the board, but especially to appeal to Mr. Garcia. Two years ago, as we met in the Kinder Pickup area at Mission Park, you approached me and asked me if I worked at Mission Park. I told you I was a parent and you then handed me your card and told me, "I'm your trustee and if you need any help, please call me and let me know what you need help with." And I really appreciated that. And over the couple of years, two, three years, I have run into you over and over again at district events and we've had little chats along the way with, with something for educating parents about how to help their students do better with Common Core stuff or something at Hartnell College, we ran into each other, where I attended something about health and helping to, you know, raise healthy children. And several times, you've noted to me when we've run into each other that I'm one of the few or one of the only Mission Park parents that was attending these events. And I have found it difficult when attending the events to find workshops for me to understand at the rate that I need to understand because I'm constantly translating in my head from Spanish to English. And I think that may be one of the reasons why a lot of parents from Mission Park have not gone to some of these events. And I understand that the majority of our parents that are there are Spanish first language, but I think that we need to provide for all of the parents. The reason I'm up here to talk to you now is that because I have become a very active parent in going to the things that the district has put on and trying to support my principal and being a part of the BBB group that's trying to make things better for students. And over the time, I have got, been lucky to get to know a lot of parents who are very passionate and very involved and very diverse, if you would sit in the meetings with us and see. And I feel that now there's this upcoming perpetual idea that it's a bunch of angry white people trying to, you know, oust somebody who is not listening to them and, and that we're not representing the whole, we don't represent Salinas. And, and I am not one of those people and everybody in the room is not what we're being described as being. And I understand that it's not necessarily the people on this board that are perpetuating that, but the local news media has perpetuated that and a lot of the hearsay from parents across town has perpetuated that. So, I'm here, Mr. Garcia, to ask you, because you said if I could help you, to come to you. And I'm here to ask you to help us stop perpetuating that idea. Whatever you can do, please help because we're just concerned and we're trying to do the best for our students, like everybody sitting there and everybody waiting out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go into the rest of the agenda. That was our last speaker. And I want to thank the board for being up here diligently doing their work at the same time. As a reminder, this is our meeting. It's open. Thank you. Consent agenda items. Set of items, discussion. Are there any changes current? My colleague here to my left. Do you have a question?
Look, I, I just didn't know, usually there's a, there's a question about some of these and everything, right this time? Oh, we hope so, okay.
Oh, I read it. I read it, it was okay.
Yeah, right. People usually hope so, but I...
But that's the item we're, we're on right now. Just finishing the individuals wanting to talk, just address the board itself. So, I'm looking for a motion. Or any comments on, on the item consent? Do we pull the item? What item?
Item five.
Item number five, so pull. I can't hear anything. Six eight?
Six eight.
Oh, six eight. I keep getting trucks behind me. Any other item? Any done? Okay, we'll go to the agenda minus, so five and six eight as an apple.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the item consent except for five and six for a separate vote and discussion.
There's a motion on the second, on the item consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, that's five zero and then number, number five, let's go, address number five.
My name is Gloria Alataz, Mission Park, and I wanted to question the deny of the leave of absence for De Nablo. If she requested that leave of absence, she definitely does need it. She is a wonderful employee to our district. She is a great person to work with and she has always given her very best. And I've seen every new board meeting requests for leave of absence and she definitely has valid reason for requesting it. And so, I'm concerned that that request will be denied. And I feel it should be given to her and I would like it to come to the last.
Thank you. Would you like to respond?
I would like to respond.
Yes, personnel, please. I know it's a personnel issue, but...
It is true that most generally, the board does approve requests for unpaid leave for employees that are permanent employees. In this case, the special ed, people personnel services director and myself are requesting that the board deny this partly because of the reason that this is a unique position. We are hoping that we will be able to find a replacement and that we will have continuity with that replacement. There is no intended criticism on the part of the services and the job that this employee did for us in the past. Our concern is that we are trying to build a position and have continuity for not just the remainder of this year, but future. So, it's entirely up to the board. It is unique and so we bring it to you with, with that recommendation.
Thank you very much. Board members, comments? Okay, number six eight.
The board, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions about, sorry, trying to find it now, about the contract with iResult. One thing I was noticing that this talks about first-year data and the cost of that, but this...